I'm here to call the Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, meeting of the Williamsburg Planning Commission to order, and I'd like to start by welcoming our newest member, Mr. Granger, to Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, if you'll call the roll?
Oh.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Schaller?
Here.
Mr. Cle?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
And Mr. Julian.
Here.
All right, well, the first thing on our agenda is the election of a chairperson, so I'm here to take nominations for a new chair for the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Stafford for Chair and Elaine Macbeth for First Vice Chair, Jeffrey Cle for Second Vice Chair.
She's our second?
I second that motion.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Mr. Granger?
Yes.
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Cle?
Aye.
Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Okay, well, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 17th meeting. Does anybody have any changes or additions to those minutes? Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of the May 17th meeting.
Second?
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Schaller?
Abstain.
Mr. Cle?
Aye.
Stafford?
Abstain.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
All right, there are no consent agenda items on our agenda, so we'll move to our public hearing, PCR 17-014, to amend the zoning ordinance by adding Section 21623 to Article 4, to allow duplex dwellings existing in the residential districts prior to January 1st, 2004, to apply for a special exception from the Boni Board of Zoning Appeals to demonstrate the existence of legal nonconforming use, so long as the owner meets certain conditions contained in the ordinance.
And I'll give this presentation. I want to start by explaining what is a nonconforming use and what is a legal nonconforming use. A nonconforming use exists when some use by right was allowed in a zoning district, and the zoning ordinance is subsequently amended so that that use is no longer a permitted use in that district. If a property is being used, notwithstanding that, because they were allowed to under the previous zoning, they become a nonconforming use. So long as that use continues unabated for a period of more than two years, they are able to then continue that use. So as long as it doesn't cease to be used that way for a period of more than two years, it is a legal nonconforming use. That is state law. The city of Williamsburg is not able to change that. That is a property right that is inherent to the property owner. We have a number of duplex properties in the city which may or may not be legally nonconforming. In most of the single-family neighborhoods in the city, duplexes have not been permitted since 1966. That's 51 years of records that someone has to produce in order to prove that they have a legal nonconforming use. So we had a couple of cases earlier this year that demonstrated how difficult that is to do, particularly for subsequent owners of the property. So if the property was a duplex, it was owned by someone in 1961, they sold it in 1980 to the current owner or subsequent owners after that, the records are difficult to come by from the first owner. City Council asked us to look at this issue and make recommendations regarding a way that the existing duplexes in the city that have been duplexes for a long period of time could continue to exist without having such a difficult burden to prove. There are a couple of ways to do that. One is by changing the zoning ordinance to allow a use by right. But in doing that, you open up non-duplex dwellings to become duplex dwellings, and so that is not staff's recommendation. Staff is and has developed a special exception process for the Planning Commission and ultimately City Council to consider, which would, assuming the owner is able to meet the conditions of the special exception, allow existing duplexes that have existed since prior to 2004 to continue to exist, so long as they can meet the conditions of the special exception, without having to go back to 1965 to prove that the duplex existed in 1965. The conditions are outlined in the ordinance. So first, the property would have to have been a duplex prior to January 1st of 2004. That's when the city began its rental inspection program and has a better idea of what properties were duplexes at that point. The current owner cannot have been the one who created the duplex. If you own a duplex, that was a duplex prior to 1966, you probably know and have records for that. One would hope that you have those, but you should be able to say what has happened to the property. It's the subsequent owners who have the problem, and so we have limited this to subsequent owners. So if the dwelling was a duplex and you bought the dwelling unit and it was a duplex in 1987, you would not be the original owner, you would be a subsequent owner who would be eligible to participate in this. If you are the current owner of a duplex that is not legally nonconforming and you subsequently sell it after September the 1st, the right to a special exception is not going to follow you. So that also prevents you from doing what you couldn't do right now, a year later, if you transferred the property. The property cannot have had an adverse impact on the neighborhood, and that is defined in the ordinance. So the Board of Zoning Appeals should consider whether or not the property has had three or more complaints that have been substantiated by the city staff within the last four years prior to the date of the application, and that's the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code, the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code, the nuisance ordinance, or the zoning ordinance related to how many people are residing in a dwelling unit. The zoning administrator or records held by the city cannot otherwise clearly establish that the property is not legally conforming. So if your house is built in 1978 and a duplex has not been permitted since 1966, it's not a legal nonconformity. There's no way to make that legally nonconforming. And the special exception can be revoked by the Board of Zoning Appeals if there's a showing that there are three or more violations of the city code, or the Virginia State Uniform Statewide Building Code, or the Fire Prevention Code, on a rolling one-year basis. So if you have a complaint, you measure back from one year to see if you have two complaints prior to that. The special exception follows the property, not the property owner, so that creates some certainty which may or may not exist right now. And this is not going to replace having a legal nonconforming use. So if you have a legal nonconforming use, you can still continue to use your property the way that you always have. This just makes a somewhat less burdensome process for those existing duplexes that have existed for a long time, where the owner thought, in all likelihood, that it was a legal use but wasn't necessarily a legal use, or they can't prove that it's legal use. So that's the proposal that's in front of you, as outlined in my memo and in the ordinance itself. This is not going to create a right to have a duplex where there is no duplex right now. It will not expand the number of existing duplexes from the number that exist right now. It will not allow additional people into a dwelling unit that are not already permitted by city code. The four-person exception does not apply to duplexes, and additional rooms to rumors are also only available to owner-occupied, single-family dwellings. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
All right, does anyone on Planning Commission have any questions for Michelle?
I just want to clarify one thing that I didn't pick up on in the memorandum, which was if a house was built since 1966, it cannot, by definition, be a legal nonconforming duplex. So the list of 47 properties that's in our packet, all of those therefore must have been built before 1966, is that correct?
Yes, I believe all but one of them clearly shows before 66. There's one with the 68 date on it, so that'll have to be verified. It's just a number, a date that was put in the assessor's office, so some more checking may be needed on that one.
That's fine, thank you.
Other questions? All right, if there's no other questions from Planning Commission at this time, then we'll open the public hearing. If anybody wants to make a comment on this public hearing, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and your address, and we'll open that public hearing. All right, seeing no takers, oh, do you want to come up?
This is not a complaint, this is just a clarification. I wonder why this situation, which has arisen unto the city, why the city couldn't just grandfather these particular structures, seeing that they are in existence? Why should there be any other necessary maneuvers, other than to say, they're by right of existence, grandfathered in, and that would go with the sale of the property, I believe? That's all. And, oh, how many properties does this involve?
All right, so the list is of forty?
Eight.
Forty-seven. So there are 47 properties that this involves. But as I understand it, Michelle, this is essentially the process by which someone becomes grandfathered in, if you want to use that term. They have to apply for it, it's just not granted as a blanket, because they need to demonstrate that they haven't stopped using the property for the two-year period of time, which means that they lose their grandfather. So this is the simplified grandfathering process for these properties, but it still requires that the individual go through this process and show that it hasn't been a nuisance in the neighborhood. So it's just, there are some conditions on the grandfather. Is that a correct characterization?
The special exception will follow the property. It's just not staff's recommendation that we start amending the zoning ordinance in 40 different spots in multiple different neighborhoods with respect to these properties, and so this creates a process that is uniform as to all of the properties that this impacts.
But functionally, as soon as someone goes through this special exception process, then that becomes, as you were saying, the property then becomes grandfathered, and it stays with the property, no matter if it's transferred.
I'm just amazed that we have this many properties that have somehow or another slipped through the woodwork.
Well, and note, all these properties are properties that were built prior to that 1966, so when you start looking at the list of where they are, they're in sort of every neighborhood of the city.
It's very surprising. Thank you.
Other public comments on this issue? Can you state your name?
My name is Richard Phillips. I live in Skipwith Farms. This is just strictly a comment, it isn't the purpose I came, I'll speak about that later. Walking around my neighborhood, which is Skipwith Farms, I observe a lot of properties where it's pretty obvious that more than one family or one related person is living there. Has the city done any kind of summary to find out where those properties, I mean, which ones are hosting, I guess, multiple? Because I think you could count, I think I could count spotty seven if I just walked through the neighborhood.
Ms. Murphy, what's the process by which individuals can refer a concern about someone violating the zoning rules about the number of people living on a property?
You can call the Planning Department at 220-6130, or email us.
So certainly.
Yeah, I'm not here to report anybody. I'm just saying, as an observation, there is a situation, and I believe most of the homes in there were built after 1966, and I believe it's been, in many cases, an ongoing situation. There seems to be more lately, strictly an observation, but it might be something that the city wants to look into in some way or another.
Is there a formal enforcement process that?
These, what's before you today are duplex units, so we're talking about two separate units. I don't believe Skipwith has 46 or more units that have been converted illegally to duplexes. There might be different types of individuals living in a home, but are they two separate units you're talking about? Or are you talking about the number, the types of individuals living in it?
I can think of, I don't know, maybe half a dozen that have separate entrances, and actually, and in many cases, appear to have had garages converted to basically a studio-type apartment. I know definitely of one, I don't want to go any further than that, it belongs to my brother-in-law, so.
But, Carolyn, I mean, I think part of maybe the nuance here is that versus having a rumor or renting a garage apartment, in quotes, a duplex actually has a full legal kitchen and all of these other parts, and it makes it a different kind of a unit, yeah. Separate addresses, usually an A and B kind of?
Just an observation.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road, and I first heard about the issue from my friend Bob Cypher's when he had a difficulty with his duplex. He was challenged on it, and Bob had to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and plead his case. I was not in attendance to that, so I can't say exactly what took place there, except I did study up on the minutes provided by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And very importantly, at the conclusion of the minutes, Mr. Jallow, who I believe is the head of the BZA, suggested that the board request that City Council consider amending the zoning ordinance, so people don't have to provide documentation as far back as 50 years, as was the case for Mr. Cypher's, quoting still, "There should be a time limit included in the ordinance." That's the issue before us today. That was the issue that the Board of Zoning Appeals had to deal with, and so I thank everyone who is, I've been trying to deal with it, the City Council, Ms. Shelton, and the like. But I am bothered by one part of this special exception, and that is when we talk about zoning violations, I'm sorry, violations, and talk of housing nuisances and the like, nuisance housing. I live at 205 Indian Springs, as I said, and one of my neighbors, who I did not know, their names aren't McConnell's, they own a property at 211 Indian Springs. And they purchased the property, I believe in 2013, for their daughter, who was a student at William &amp; Mary. They had every intention of being good neighbors, and as far as I could tell, they have been, the students have been. Certainly in my household, we've never had any problem with them, hardly even know they're there. Yet the McConnell's were challenged very unfairly, as it turns out, with the status of duplex, and they had to hire an attorney, and I can only imagine what the expense was. If it was under $10,000, I'd be very surprised. In addition to that, was the time it took for them to come to Williamsburg to take part in the proceeding at the BZA. But of importance to me, and what should be important to everybody, was not just that, but it was neighborhood relations, and particularly between some citizens and students, as it turns out. It was kind of a classic town-gown confrontation. And regardless on what side of the fence you sit on, everyone walked out of the meeting with negative feelings, and particularly the students. They will not be looking back at their time here at William &amp; Mary in Williamsburg, perhaps I should clarify, with fondness for all that went on. Certainly, they're going to have some fond memories. But this experience that they went through was totally unwarranted, and again, as it turned out, the Board of Zoning Appeals ruled 5-0 in their favor. And it occurs to me that the houses that have been challenged, Mr. Cypher's, McConnell's, and I understand there have been some others, I don't know certainly which ones, but it seems that in every case, it's student housing. And we, Lord knows, we are all aware of the problems we've had between town-gown situations, students and citizens. The proposal here to include violations and perhaps revoke the special exception because of violations has nothing to do with the issue. The issue at hand was very succinctly spelled out by Mr. Jallow, and that is the burden on the owner to prove 50 years' worth of occupancy who lived in the place before that. We have laws in place already to deal with violations. We have plenty of opportunities for people who have a problem with a neighbor to contact the city and deal with it appropriately. To use that as either a threat or as a weapon can only cause further problems, and we certainly don't need that between our students and our neighbors. We should do whatever it takes to promote neighborliness and to be a welcoming community for students. But I see this, I see these provisions in this proposal as being very problematic going forward, and that's all we need, is to have the campus take an issue on again, like, say the town is against us, as we've seen before. Let's stop that now before it happens, and let's be fair to everybody. Thank you very much.
Shelley? Any other comments on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open up discussion for the commission. Anybody like to speak to any of the points that we've heard raised, or raise points of their own?
If I may, I'd like to go ahead and get something out of the way. I'm Greg Granger. Company which I own, more than a 3% interest, owns two properties which are affected by the zoning amendment proposed to permit a special exception for the existing duplex dwellings. There are 40 properties affected by the proposal pursuant to Section 2.2-3112, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 2 of the Code of Virginia. I'm permitted to participate in the discussion and vote, notwithstanding that interest. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Do other people want to start the discussion?
I think there's a couple of things probably worth saying at the outset, one of which is, there seems to be some consensus among the people that we've heard from, anyway, both from the audience and in that correspondence we've gotten, that the proposed ordinance is reasonable, but what people have generally had some trouble with is the requirements that there be no violations, essentially. And so I think that's something that we've got to sort of suss out. I'm trying to, when I read through it, and even now, it strikes me as complex, and so I've been sort of struggling with whether we can simplify this a little bit, just to make it easier for applicants, because the goal is to make it easier for homeowners who are in this situation right now. So I hope that we can, if we do make any changes, that those changes help make it simpler for people who would be affected. And, I mean, basically what we're doing, it seems to me, is advancing, taking the due date from 1966 and moving it forward to 2004. Is that, if I were to grossly oversimplify, is that a reasonable gross oversimplification of what this ordinance is trying to do?
It creates an alternative process to allow existing duplex dwellings to continue to exist.
Right.
A property owner, if they had a property that existed prior to the change in the zoning ordinance, has every right to continue to use the property the way that they have been, so long as there hasn't been a cessation of use for more than two years. It's not really moving the date so much as creating an alternative process.
Okay, so does it not move the date, the documentation date? Right now, they only need to go back to 2004 rather than 1966?
The purpose is to create an easier process.
Yeah, okay.
But the one thing with this new date is that these conditions apply, which they don't apply to, if you could go back the 50 years, then these conditions don't apply.
Oh, I see.
Well, let me just say one thing about that. The Board of Zoning Appeals, in their review of special exceptions, is required to assess the impact of the special exception on the neighborhood. There is not a definition in the general review standard for what that means, and so the reason that language is in the code, or in the proposed ordinance, the way that it is, is because there needs to be a standard, so we don't get exactly the situation that Mr. Shelley was complaining of. There is some objective standard by which the Board of Zoning Appeals can look at the existing record and say, this is a house that has been nonproblematic, or this is a house that has been problematic.
So supposing, so, okay, I'm starting to get some clarity. Supposing I had a house that had been problematic, that the city had had some complaints about, but I can document all the way back to 1966?
Then you can continue to use that house as a duplex dwelling, so long as the use doesn't cease for a period of more than two years.
So the old process remains in place?
That's right.
The new process, if I don't have any complaints, if I have a clean record from the rental?
Will make it much simpler for you to prove what you need to prove in order to be able to continue the use as a duplex. It is not going to replace the legal nonconforming use requirements in the state code. That's why I started my comments, by saying that process exists, and nothing in this ordinance is going to change that process.
Right, okay, thank you.
This is also voluntary?
Right.
Much like the four-person, the additional person, similar requirements in that program.
Okay.
Are there comments on the criteria here? Yeah, I think, while Chris is still talking here. So the other piece that we've heard some comment about is the folding in of what I'm thinking is, like, the rental inspection guidelines, you know, this oversight and the idea of having a problematic house, is, these are all rental properties, or at least part of the duplexes, if someone's living in the one half, the other part's a rental property, so they're covered by the rental inspection program?
Yes.
Right? So?
If they are already part of the rental inspection program, they will continue to be part of the rental inspection program.
And so are some of these oversight components not covered in that part of the regulation of that unit, as a housing unit?
The rental inspection program is a health and safety inspection. It only deals with violations of the fire code and the building code.
Then the other way of parsing this for me is that, okay, they get approved, they're a duplex, then they have a bad string of incidents. Would they be, like, not able to rent for a year before? You said at the end of every year, like, the slate is cleaned off again? Would that, would it put, like, it on probation, or just totally remove it?
The current ordinance does not provide for a probationary period. You could certainly recommend that. In that instance, as the ordinance is written, they would need to go back and prove the legal nonconformity.
I would also note that at least six on the list are not in a rental inspection district, because rental inspection districts don't cover the entire city.
Is that overlay district, right, sure. And duplexes, these duplexes are where one is a rental unit, it's not possible to have two separate owners of the duplex that's legally nonconform, in this category. There could be duplexes that are owned by separate entities, but they would not be on this list.
I don't think any of the ones on this list are owned by two separate owners, no.
But could they be owner-occupied?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good point, right. My mother-in-law and the other one.
This does not require one or other of the units to be owner-occupied, they can both be rentals.
Other items to discuss?
How frequent are violations or reports of violation? How big of an issue are we talking about? Is it a handful of the houses that would have multiple violations to date, or?
On your list, if you have C-2016 on the list, one of the categories, those were the violations we have for those properties for 2016. It's not, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing this on the list.
About 11 of the 40-some have had some type of violation last year. The most of one has been three. Most of them are one or two.
To clarify, these are not just complaints, but then complaints which are then investigated and found to have merit?
Yes, that's correct.
And it wouldn't just be a noise complaint, this is a violation of a code, not?
That's, that's correct. It could be a tall grass, it could be siding, you know, trim needs painting, some code citation.
And presumably, when BZA is reviewing that material, the guidance is, the, I forgot, well, I can look up how the proposed ordinance is written. The ordinance says, I'm trying to remember if it's a shall or a will, yes, okay. "In making that, in determining adverse impact, the Board of Zoning Appeals shall only consider whether or not the property has had three or more complaints substantiated by city staff within the four years prior to the date of the application." That doesn't mean that they have to say, "Three or more complaints, forget it." If, if your house needed painting and it was repainted the next day, they could, they could say, "That's not an issue for us."
It does not require them to deny the special exception on that basis.
It requires them to deny the special exception.
It does not require them.
It does not require it.
It just requires them to consider that.
Right. That was my understanding.
And to consider only those things and not other things.
Not other factors. Yeah. Yep, that's great.
I don't, go ahead, yeah. I don't see where it deals with complaints that are, that go as corrected. So there are, there are seasons where sometimes you have some wonderful tenants, and seasons where you have some not-so-wonderful tenants. And it takes a little bit of time to correct some things, other things are much easier to correct, and some things you just have to find new tenants. And there are times where it takes a little bit of time to do those. But if an inspection took place and there were, there was tall grass and peeling paint and a missing smoke detector in one inspection, that could account for three issues. Is there a mechanism that allows the issue or complaint to be corrected, and then if it's corrected in a timely manner, then it doesn't move forward with that process?
We could put in some language that said something to the effect of, "Consider three or more complaints, not timely corrected," but then what's timely? And timely is 30 days, 90 days, there's an appeal process for complaints received by the city that are cited in the, whatever code section it happens to be. So this is, this is something that the BZA considers. It's not necessarily the determining factor. My concern is making sure that a roomful of people with no substantiated complaints, the complaints need to be substantiated, is basically what I was trying to get to with this.
But then the BZA would presumably have an applicant, a packet, that would indicate, "Okay, these were the complaints, this is when they were addressed, this is the nature of the complaints, everybody's, everybody's satisfied that they were dealt with in an appropriate manner," and the BZA could say, "Well, this seems fine, we'll grant the special exception." Right? And we, I think it's, it's probably right to allow some latitude for them to just be intelligent and use their judgment.
I would agree.
So...
I don't see where, where this allows for that, though.
Well, it does, because it says, this says that the Board of Zoning Appeals can only consider this, these set of things, and then those are the things they can consider, and they can consider any mitigating circumstances that they want.
Why, why don't we add some language that says whether or not the property's had three or more complaints and the correction history for those complaints?
Yeah.
I, I think it's great that the time period starts in 2004, which is just about the time that the rental inspection program started. I think we have a great rental inspection program, and they are very diligent in setting up timeframes and parameters for when things need to get corrected. So your point of, well, what's a reasonable amount of time? I think the process is in place. And one of the things that I would hope could possibly take place is, the properties that are not in the rental inspection district, that are duplexes, that they be brought into the rental inspection program, because then they're being checked on a regular basis, and that also allows the city to keep track of the property being rented on a continuous basis.
The state code requires the city council to make certain findings with respect to areas in which the rental inspection program is applied, that have to do with the general condition of the property, the age of the property, the density of the neighborhood. And so city council would actually have to physically put a neighborhood into the rental inspection program in order to do that, the exception being multifamily units, and they have the ability to do that on a case-by-case basis.
My thought was, since they were opting in to this program, that they would opt into the rental inspection program. So that was my thought there. And I, the other thought that I had is, are there possibly duplexes out there that we've missed on the list? And should there be an advertisement period to the public to invite them to go ahead and join up for this process, just in case we've missed them, an advertising period saying, "If you've got a duplex, please step forward if you're interested in being part of this process."
Staff, there's no reason that staff couldn't do that.
Yeah.
Well, my, my thought is that, you know, in, in sort of following the idea of creating an alternate route to simplify things, that this process dramatically simplifies what homeowners are asked to provide in terms of trying to document this nonconforming use, and that the requirements that are being placed on that are relatively, I think, reasonable, given the dramatic decrease in effort that's required to use this alternate means. So I would, I would support this as written, or with the suggested amendments that Ms. Shelton offered, because I think that it, it is a very clean process, and it does explicitly state what should be considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals when they look at a property to decide that it should get this special exception. And I think that those conditions are a good balance of what is fair to protect the community, but does not go out of its way to demonize renters. So I think it's, it's a nice balance of making sure that other property owners in the neighborhoods are protected, and if this is a property that has seen a string of complaints that have been substantiated and don't have any mitigating circumstances, where the home, the property owner has tried to correct them and, you know, has just had a bad situation with one set of renters, but instead it is sort of a history of not taking care of this property and respecting their neighbors. I think that this makes it clear that they won't be eligible for the exception. So I think it's important.
I think I just heard a motion. I think I just heard a motion.
Yes. Well, I didn't want to cut down any discussion if people wanted to discuss further.
No, I think very succinctly.
Well, so if nobody wants to discuss further, I would make the motion that we recommend to city council that they approve the proposed ordinance as written. I personally don't see the need for any additional word changes, because then it gets clear that it gives the Board of Zoning Appeals the ability to look at mitigating circumstances as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dee?
Mr. Granger?
Nay.
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Cle?
Aye.
Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
All right. The next item on our agenda is an open forum, so this is time for anybody to bring any matter to the attention of planning commission over which we have purview. So I will open the forum and ask anybody who has any issue they want to discuss with us to state their name and address. Please come up. And if you'll state your name again for the record.
My name is Richard Phillips. As I said before, I am the resident of Williamsburg since 1993. 1994, I acquired a house in Skipwood Farms. In 2013, I was appointed to fill the position being vacated by an individual by the name of Greg Hancock to, to the Board of Directors of the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District. Now, the Soil and Water Conservation District has two, two directors elected by the city of Williamsburg. However, I believe the city has probably not had too much involvement with the Soil and Water Conservation District, because the primary emphasis of soil and water conservation has been agriculture. However, in the last six to eight years, there's been more and more concern about stormwater management, and one of the big issues of stormwater management is urban stormwater. I just wanted to bring to the attention, it was particularly, I noted at the hearing we had earlier this month, and I heard about it at the last minute and went to the hearing, and this regarded the redevelopment of the Williamsburg Shopping Center property. And as I go around the city, I notice a lot of properties that are being redeveloped or changing use. This fits in quite well with what the new emphasis has been, recent emphasis, I don't want to say new emphasis, with the Soil and Water Conservation District. They are developing urban programs, programs directed at mitigating existing conditions. When properties are redeveloped, I would urge the city to consider reviewing them, not just for their change in use, but also to mitigate those problems which basically have been created over the last, well, probably three or four decades. I think there's been a great deal of emphasis on it in the last 10 years regarding the Chesapeake Bay Act, things that can be done as far as rainwater is concerned, as we get into multi-use, as we get removal of pavements, the types of things that can be done to mitigate that. I've got a couple of articles here, I'm going to leave with Carolyn. It's something I've been involved in, because I am a civil engineer and I've worked for a couple of consulting firms here in Williamsburg, and also for the College of William &amp; Mary. I've done projects for the city of Williamsburg, for Colonial Williamsburg, for the College of William &amp; Mary, done projects in James City County, Water Country, Bush Gardens, you name it, I've probably been involved in all of them. So I have a great deal of interest in it, and that's probably the reason I was nominated to fill the vacancy a few years ago. I know it was the reason. But anyways, I hate to see opportunities missed, and I believe I have seen some cases where things could have been done rather simply. It is, it is add to a, it is a cost item, but we don't want to be continuing a poor use, or even creating a problem, when we could have the prop, the ability to mitigate and improve conditions as far as rainwater harvesting, or stormwater management, and many of the things that can be done. I've got a couple of brochures here. One of them is an outline of the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program, which is a program that's being promoted by the Soil and Water Conservation Districts to actually offset the cost. There are grants that are available to individuals, I believe there's going to be some to municipalities, and it's in its very fledgling stages, but it's something that we do well to keep in mind and try to incorporate into any redevelopment work that we do. I will give this to Carol, and hopefully we'll be discussing it more, and with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the open forum. We have nothing under site plans and subdivisions. Does anyone have any new business to bring up to the commission? Anything else that we should discuss under other? We've got our usual information items, and there is a public hearing scheduled for next meeting on August 16, 2017, that we will be hearing. Nothing else to discuss? I'll adjourn the meeting.